Just before we get going, I would like to acknowledge the passing of a former councillor here, Malcolm Beaton, and we will observe a moment of silence at regular council until all is settled. Are there any items to be added to the agenda by unanimous consent?
I was just gonna say, is your mic on? Okay, no. It's not just me. Okay.
Did you want to have something there, Brian?
No.
Is mine on? No, I thought you had it on. No items to be added?
There is one, the Lucile seniors.
Oh, sorry.
You want me to add that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Deputy?
Yep. Thank you, Warden. I'd like to add a grant from the Lucile Flirtalies seniors in Pentrainers Club. I guess, I think it's been reviewed by our staff and everything was okay with it.
Great.
So I'd like to have that added with unanimous consent.
Okay. Good, good, good. Okay. Very good, thank you. Anything else? Okay, I will look for approval of the agenda with items added. Moved by councillor Bushet, seconded by deputy warden. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. In your package, you would have had a, the minutes from our January fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen meeting. Are there any comments, any errors or omissions to be brought forward?
I move the minutes of January fourteenth, that's related.
It's been moved by councillor Martel that the minutes from January fourteenth meeting be adopted. Do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Bushet. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. We are actually expecting a presenter from the Straight Area Sexual Violence Prevention and Support Coalition. They are running a little bit late. So maybe we'll, we'll come back to them in a little bit and perhaps we could move on to item five. So I will turn the, the mic over. This is with regards to three grant requests. I'll turn the mic over to our CFO, Jason.
You want me to do the tax exemption, Ken, or did you have something to say?
Yeah, no, go right ahead. Yep.
I'm gonna try it again.
You might be okay speaking into Brian's.
Try it again. It can't be quick enough.
Try it again, Jason.
I'll just talk a little bit louder.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The first thing on the correspondent list is a tax exemption request by the Rocky Bay Irish Club. And it's account number one zero five eight seven two five five. And I believe we had been contacted by this group to, to request that they be added to bylaw fifty-six. So I won't say much on it, but I did a little bit of research today, excuse me, just on how this had came about. And what it appears to be is that sometime in two thousand and fifteen, a new property identification number was created for the ball field in Rocky Bay. So previously, the hall and the ball field was all located under the same PID. So in essence, the ball field was covered under tax exemption by law fifty-six. We're not sure why a new PID was created, but the fact of the matter is, is that the property was split into two. And a new, a new PID was created, which was the ball field and the hall separately. So tax bill started to generate in two thousand and fifteen. And now, of course, because there's been taxes for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, there's been penalties and interest accrued on the account. And the group noticed that there was an accumulation of amounts owing. So it looks like there's approximately sixteen hundred owed on the account currently. So we'd like direction from council, I guess, whether to add this to the bylaw.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. So we heard the, the reason as to why this has been presented to council this evening. Entertain discussion or, I'm sorry, a motion? Councillor Martel?
Yeah, I'd like to move that in light of what's been said, then that they were already exempted, just to make it legal. I'd like to make a motion that we give the, the M.D. tax exemption under bylaw fifty-six.
It's been moved by councillor Martel that the, the Rocky Bay Irish Club and Ball Field, the Ball Field portion of that be exempt under bylaw fifty-six. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by councillor Goyesh on discussion. Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Warden. Okay, there's, I kind of see two issues here. Once we put this property on bylaw fifty-six, what happens with the taxes? The arrears of taxes, do we need another motion to wipe that off, or will that come at budget time for that?
Yeah, so my understanding of how it works is that we can't, we can't go back in time to write off the taxes. So the principal can't be waived on those taxes. If the bylaw is amended in the current fiscal year, what we've done in past practice is we, we wrote off the current taxes for the year. But we can't go back in prior fiscals. So they will have, they're, they will still have to cover the amount on the account.
Have they been communicated that?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you, Warden.
Okay, thank you.
So Jason, you're saying that that's part of the, part of our structure or our policy about taxes, that we can't, because of the fact that they were already exempted? I mean, all we're doing right now, we're legalizing the fact that their, the A and N number was changed. They, they were already exempted, so they shouldn't be having, be made to be paid taxes because they were exempted as part of the bigger, the bigger parcel of land. I mean, the parcel of land might have been as, as simple as something that they needed to put a sewer system in, and they couldn't put it unless they had so much land. So it's not really their fault, and they weren't really aware that there was two different NOD numbers. So, but really, in essence, they were really exempted for the whole thing. So they shouldn't be paying taxes.
Yeah, we're not, staff is not privy to why, to why the new PID was created. It's something that probably happened either that they did something and it triggered it, or PVSC came in and triggered it. However, my thought is, is that the onus would be on the group to come forward and investigate this in two thousand and fifteen when they had first gotten a tax bill. However, my understanding, my understanding in speaking to staff is that council does not have the authority to write off principal based on the MGA. So it's not really a, it's not really an option, I guess. So it's kind of an unfortunate situation. But any group that has come forward in, in the past, in any type of extenuating circumstance, we have not agreed to written off principal from prior years. If the bylaw was amended in the current year, we have amended the taxes for the current year because the billings are open, so to speak. But we haven't gone back and written off principal for prior years for, we can't do it for anybody. So it's, it's really nothing to do with the group unless there was, unless there was another reason. But my understanding is that the MGA just doesn't allow it.
Councillor Goyesh?
Yes, I'm confused at why are both properties now under the Rocky Bay Irish Club? Now, why would they be separated if they were originally exempt and they registered under the Societies Act? Why would they create another property unless the properties changed hands? I can't see it. Either it was under the Rocky Bay Club originally, and they transferred the hall itself to the Rocky Bay Irish Club and didn't. Then later on, they transferred the baseball property to the Irish Club. Because it doesn't make any sense that all of a sudden there appears a new PID number for no reason at all.
Yeah, so again, we're not, we're not sure what the reason is. We know for a fact that the ball field and the hall were under the same property account number prior to two thousand and fifteen. And then in two thousand and fifteen-
They changed.
Basically, they must have subdivided the property, so it now created two property assessment accounts. So the bylaw, what the bylaw does is we list on the bylaw properties with AAN numbers, so account numbers. So we write off based on council-approved account numbers. So because there was a new account created in the system, it automatically becomes taxable until it would get added to the bylaw like you may do tonight. We did note that the original assessment of the hall did go down sixty-five hundred. And then the account, the new account assessment was pegged at fourteen thousand, one hundred. So again, we don't know why, but they're, both properties are under the Rocky Bay Irish Club, two different assessment account numbers. And the new one has been taxable, and this is why we're here tonight, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bushet?
Thank you, Warden. I guess it's, the way I look at it, it must have been under the one heading right from the start. But I tend to agree with Jason here that maybe somebody decided to separate those properties to do something else with the ball field. Because I don't think the ball field's been operated for a long time.
Oh, no, they use it in the summer.
They use it in the summertime? Well, I can understand, but I would think before we make motions here that we should find out from PBC what happened. Because it's nobody's fault here that this has been going on. I certainly don't want to penalize the Rocky Bay Club for something that they had before, and all of a sudden, somebody come along and change it without notifying them. So I, I think before we, we move forward with it, we should reinvestigate through PBC and find out why, why those, those two PID numbers came about.
Thank you.
So there's a motion?
The motion on the floor was to add them to bylaw fifty-six. So maybe what, what I might suggest is if we could give them an actual reason as to why, why, you know, look, look for an explanation as to why there was two property numbers created. And that would give them an answer as to why they started to receive a tax bill. And in the meantime, I guess, by adding them, they certainly won't have to pay taxes moving forward. But as Jason mentioned, I think, you know, for the, for the tax bill for the past several years, there's probably not much we can do about that. So it's a bit of a good news, bad news kind of thing, so.
No, but I'd like to, I second the motion, but I'm willing to withdraw the motion, and I agree with councillor Bushet. It's not gonna make any difference for us to get information from the Property Valuations Services to find out exactly what the situation is. Because it confuses me that you got a whole property exempt in one case, and all of a sudden, in two thousand and fifteen, you got another property being created that was part of the package property. Something must have happened, and it's confusing, and I think the Property Valuations Services should be able to clarify this. And it doesn't mean that we won't exempt them, just I'd like more information on this piece of property.
So you would like to withdraw the motion?
I, I, with the approval of the, with the approval of the mover, I, I could withdraw my-
I, I think the best thing is just to feed it. But I don't see a problem with granting it for that property. Unless there's an intention to put it all back into one PID number, let's put that on bylaw fifty-six, and then let's find out what happened, as councillor Bushet states. Once we know what happened, maybe we can grant them back the taxes for the previous.
After we, after we see what's going on, we could grant them back the taxes. But for now, really, the intention is to add them to bylaw fifty-six.
To add them, get it added, and it'll be done.
Which is what the motion is, but we could still investigate.
Well, okay.
And once it's added-
The motion would have to be conditional on what, you know, if the reason changed.
No, no. If we, if we can't do anything with the taxes, we can't. But if they're added, then you can do something with the current year taxes, only once they're added.
Okay. The motion was simply to add them to bylaw fifty-six.
Bylaw fifty-six.
So let's add it, and if they decide to amalgamate or consolidate the properties, whatever new numbers created, we'll, we'll add that. But if they don't, let's add that one. Jason can do something with current year taxes. It'll be approved in February.
We're not doing, what is it, we're not dealing with taxes, we're dealing with the exemption of the property.
Yeah. Once we find out what happened. No, no, but current year taxes, you can only do something when they're on bylaw fifty-six.
Okay.
They get their answers and come back to us.
Okay. I'll, I'm going to invite in Mr. CAO to speak to that.
Yeah, just for a bit of clarity, I was just passing on to the warden that this is a case where the applicant, it is the applicant's responsibility to come forward with the information. So it's not about applying, then we run around trying to find answers.
Okay.
So this is a case where we would notify the applicant, saying they must get in touch with PVSC, get some kind of written response from them, and then come back to us. So we don't want to be hard on these groups, but at the same time, you know, we can't have our staff running around investigating some applicant's application for a tax exemption. So if it had something to do in-house, fine, but this is for a third party. So they, we can chat with them and tell them what they should do.
Yeah.
But they have to do the legwork. It's not us doing the legwork.
Okay. Call, call for the question. Okay, question's been called on the motion to add Rocky Bay Ball Field along with the hall to bylaw fifty-six. It's been moved by councillor Martel and seconded by councillor Goyesh. Question on the motion?
Question.
All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Thank you. Jason, are you okay with us just pausing there and welcoming our presenter? Avery, I assume?
Ah, yes, I am late.
That's okay. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you, if you want to press the big red button. Yep.
Okay, so good evening. My name is Avery Carter. I'm the Sexual Violence Prevention and Support Coordinator for Family Service of Eastern Nova Scotia. And tonight, I'm just going to give you an overview of sexual violence. Our, the program's target, mission, and guiding principles, current and upcoming projects, and then also include with my contact information. So what does sexual violence look like in the straight area? So global estimates are that one in three women and one in six men will experience sexual violence at some point in their lifetime, which essentially means that whether or not we realize that someone in our lives has been impacted by sexual violence. Yet victim survivors, they often do not report. Nineteen out of twenty cases across Canada go unreported. And whether this is due to a lack of trust and limited initiative by police, there may be immense shame and stigma, as barriers to help seeking among victims and survivors, a lack of access to appropriate services, including limited transportation, no sexual assault, nurse examiners in their region, among other barriers. Yet, what we often fail to remember is that sexual violence and all forms of violence are entirely preventable. So in response to wider recognition of sexual violence as a global issue, community responses are emerging as a way to address and mitigate the cycle of violence. And likewise, communities across Canada are beginning to, increasingly beginning to implement sexual violence response and prevention initiatives, especially in the wake of global movements such as the Me Too, Me Too and Time's Up campaigns, which many of you probably heard of. And so together, this information highlights the important role that straight area communities may play in sexual assault response and prevention. And therefore, using successful response prevention initiatives across global communities, and then guided by evidence-based research. In theory, it's our goal, but project's goal to continue this momentum by contributing to local initiatives following our, and throughout the collaboration, coordination, and supportership. So our target is the straight area, and this was a region identified by the government of Nova Scotia as a priority, given that resources are often limited, found at a distance, or completely non-existent. And our mission is not to invent the wheel by creating newer innovative resources. Instead, our mission is to take what already exists, ensure that it's accessible, culturally and contextually appropriate, and utilized. So the principles guiding our work include community involvement, so engaging community members in the dialogue surrounding sexual violence, such as yourselves, how to respond to victims and survivors, and for those who are interested, what further actions they may take. We're also interested in collaboration, coordination among providers. So fostering supportership throughout the referral process, which may include, for example, if you have a physician who receives a disclosure, ensuring that they then refer the victim or survivor to legal services, to housing and shelter, to childcare services, whatever they may need. And then also informing future generations, so involving our youth in conversation surrounding topics such as consent and healthy relationships, increasing awareness of available resources, and also just fostering this understanding that any individual, no longer, no matter their gender identity, sexual orientation, or race, can be a victim, survivor of sexual violence. And so it's by working together and following these principles that we believe the straight area communities can and will achieve effective response prevention initiatives to sexual violence. So one of our projects has included community resource lists, which is essentially a guide that includes all the resources within your county. What's great about these guides is that they're discreet, they include resources for virtually every single community member, but they also incorporate resources specific to victims and survivors, whether that's sexual assault nurse examiner programs, the two-on-one independent legal advice for victims and survivors, and things like that. We also have the Workplace Sexual Harassment posters, which are being implemented in workplaces across Eastern Nova Scotia. And it just includes the steps to take if you've experienced sexual harassment within the workplace. But it's also important for employers as they can then implement policies for sexual harassment, and we have the steps to take, including the Human Rights Commission of Nova Scotia. They have a great resource for employers to implement that. And then we also have the Disclosure Referral Resource. So it just includes all the community support services across the straight area. And this is again a tool that's located in physicians' offices, legal offices, and it's also for community members, just if they receive a disclosure of sexual violence, where they should be referred to, whether that's medical, legal, counseling, police, what have you. Our Straight Area Sexual Violence Response and Prevention Conference is coming up on April twelfth. It includes presentations from the National Centre to End Human Trafficking, which is out of Toronto, the CyberScan Unit in Halifax, which is for, essentially deals with the sharing of inappropriate pictures, and how to help that, especially among youth. We have sexual assault centers, Legal Aid, Society of Nova Scotia, Adult Protection, others will be presenting, so it's supposed to be great afternoon. And then we also, this week is Family Violence Prevention Week across Eastern Nova Scotia. So we have events in all communities, again, across Eastern Nova Scotia, from family skates to children's story hours. Let me just, yeah. And so that is all. So again, I'm Avery Carter. I'm the Sexual Violence Prevention and Support Coordinator for Family Service of Eastern Nova Scotia. It's one of three positions across Nova Scotia, funded by the Department of Community Service, specifically for sexual violence prevention. My contact information is there. And we invite you to either participate in the event annually for Family Violence Prevention Week, but also the conference at the Port Hoxbury Civic Centre.
Thank you, Avery. I, I will take a moment just for, for our listeners, just to maybe highlight your contact information, okay?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. And phone number nine oh two eight six three two three five eight?
Eight six three two three five eight, yeah.
Okay.
And then my work cell is three three eight oh one seven seven.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much for your presentation. I know by looking at your schedule that you have a, a pretty busy next few days for sure with everything's going on. But we really appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we appreciate you coming down and, and spreading the word through council here, so thank you so much.
Yeah.
Any, any comments or questions for Avery? Thank you, Warden. Avery, where's your, maybe I missed it, your office, are you in Aniganishia?
I'm in Aniganishia, and then I travel across Eastern Nova Scotia.
So your zone is from where to where?
Picto all the way to Cape Breton.
And you say there's three of you across?
Across Nova Scotia, yeah. I help, I cover the eastern region, yeah. So it's really about getting all services that already exist to collaborate and coordinate on projects. Which is, I mean, there's always been events for Family Violence Prevention Week, but they've all been separate. So even something as simple as this awareness initiative throughout the week is just connecting everything and showing the breadth scope of different events occurring across Eastern Nova Scotia.
So how long have you guys been in existence?
The program itself, it started with funding, I think, two years ago. I just started in October, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just finished my masters at-
The University of Edinburgh. And then I was just hired in September, yeah.
Okay. And you say the conference, the April twelfth, is at the Port Hoxbury Civic Centre?
Yeah. Yeah, and there's an Eventbrite page which will be open. Right now, it's just been open to the interagencies, but it will be open to the public at the beginning of March. So you could either go to our website, which has a list of all the different projects, or on our Facebook page, there would be a link to the Eventbrite page to register.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, deputy warden. Any further comments or questions? Okay. Just, just a couple of quick ones, Avery. You had mentioned that the, the straight area, it has been identified by the government of Nova Scotia as a priority area. Is that the only priority area throughout the province, or?
Yeah, there's priority areas, so it's the rural regions of Nova Scotia includes the straight area, but also indigenous communities as well as African-Canadian communities.
Okay, so there are other priority areas throughout, yeah.
Yeah, but within that, we're also covering the indigenous communities and the African nations.
Okay. And you had also mentioned some posters or brochures or whatnot. Is there a way that we could access some of that?
Yes, those will all be available online. I did have some to bring to you, but we had more than expected interest at NSCC. So they'll all be available on our website under the Family Violence Prevention Week link.
Okay.
I will leave this poster in case there's, there's a few other events in the region happening throughout the week if you wanted to.
Great.
Or if you have family members who may be interested, yeah.
Very good. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, getting back to item five, section B. I'll turn the mic back over to our CFO, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. The grant in your package is from the Catholic Women's League, the CWL, St. Joseph's Council, Pedigree Grove. It's a grant request for a Type Two Activity Fund. The request is in the amount of five hundred dollars. And the group is, has been for years now, but is, puts on a free bingo at the St. Anne's Center Nursing Home here in Arishad. What they're looking for, the five hundred dollars for, is to go towards monetary prizes. The cost of the prizes, this is something that they do weekly. It's monetary prizes, the cost of the prizes are fifty-nine dollars per week, and it's something that they do forty-three weeks per the year. So there's no cost for the residents, of course, to join into the bingo. St. Anne's also is partnering in on this project, and they give part of the cost to offset the prizes as well. And the group is looking from council, five hundred dollars. And as I said, council gave to this group in the past to do this exact same type of event.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. So CFO has brought to council a request for five hundred dollars by Catholic Women's League of Canada Association, St. Joseph's Council, Pedigree Grove. For a motion. Councillor Martel? Removed by councillor Martel that we approve the grant request for five hundred dollars to the CWL. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second the motion, but I have a few questions on it.
Okay. It has been seconded. And a call for discussion.
Okay, on discussion, the covering letter is one thing, but the actual application, which they have here, the total amount is a thousand dollars. Inside, it says the material prize is a thousand dollars for a total of a thousand. The funds are St. Anne's five hundred, and the request is from the municipality of five hundred. The cover letter seems to be different than what they submitted as far as part of the application. My major concern, Jason, is when an organization does submit for funding, they should be able to contribute on the part of that project.
Saying there, when I look at the application itself, they said a thousand dollars total, and there's no contribution from the actual organization that's submitting for the request. There's five hundred from St. Anne's Center, according to their, inside the information, and they're requesting five hundred from the municipality. And looking at their financial statements, I think they're able to fund five hundred dollars themselves and not look for the municipality to fund five hundred. So you must have contacted them. And they say, how come their application is different than this?
Yeah, so I worked with the group representative a little bit on the application. I think there was some uncertainty there when they were filling out the application as to what, what was going on. So once we took the grant internally, CAO and I discussed, discussed the grant request, and we thought it would be best that I call back to get some further information. So as I stated in the second paragraph of the memo, the CAO that you guys have in the package, the total cost of prizes per week is fifty-nine dollars at forty-three-
per week is fifty-nine dollars, at forty-three weeks, it's something that they do most of the year, so the total cost of project is actually twenty-five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, and I'm being told that St. Anne's contributes thirty dollars per week to the initiative, so it's roughly half, half the cost, so half of the twenty-five thirty-seven would be borne by St. Anne's, which would leave a balance of about twelve forty-seven left to cover.
Yes.
So they're asking for five hundred, so basically the, the group would be responsible for covering the other seven forty-seven.
I got no problem with that, but I got a problem with what they actually submitted in the application.
Yeah, yeah.
They said the total was a thousand dollars, and now when I look at the cover letter, it's not a thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, so, uh, what we're doing with funding now, we, we done a grant structure restructuring.
Yep.
And once we get the restructuring done, we'll have to look at these, set up a policy whereby staff would be able to look at these grants and-
These won't be anymore.
Pardon?
These won't be anymore.
Yeah, they won't be anymore, these are-
After April, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, they're only out by two hundred fifty dollars.
But you're, you're right, there's, there's currently nothing in the policy says, saying, stating that staff make a decision as to whether or not that comes to council.
There's nothing, at this point, there's not, but there will be-
Right, so something to consider when we're making our changes, for sure.
When we're making our changes.
Yeah, great. Further discussion? Question's been called on the motion, um, and again, the motion is that, um, five hundred dollars go to a type-two activity fund grant request to the Catholic Women's League, um, of Canada Association. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Um, item added to the agenda, um, we'll continue on with the grant request, so there was a Lewesdale Flirdeley Seniors and Pensioners Club, and I will turn it back over to CFO.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, so the Lewesdale Flirdeley Seniors and Pensioners Club, uh, has applied for a grant, type-one infrastructure, uh, they are seeking an amount of two thousand dollars, um, and they have a couple of different initiatives, but one of them is, is Around the Dinner Table Initiative, which they, they will be hosting four times a year, um, is mainly for socially, socially-isolated seniors, will be invited by hosts to have meaningful conversations and a meal. Um, on this initiative, the group has applied to Communities Culture and Heritage and have received a grant of five thousand dollars, so I believe that letter, that approval letter is in your, uh, package for tonight. They're also looking to expand on their existing community gardens project, which I wasn't aware that they were doing this, but they have a, a community gardens project, and they're looking to build twelve new raised bed boxes, which are used by seniors and low-income families, uh, and they're also looking to make a hundred grow bags for seniors and low-income families as well, um, and what they do is, I believe, is they grow food in these, uh, in these bags and in the boxes, um, so this is gonna tie into, uh, the Around the Table dinner event that they have, so basically they're gonna showcase, um, the progress they've made on the, uh, on the construction and the growing of these foods and present it at the, uh, at their event, um, so most of the cost for this grant is to go towards infrastructure-related items like wood and, um, bed, you know, grow bags, looking to build the, these boxes to grow the food in, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay, so the ask, um, on council this evening is two thousand dollars, um, out of infrastructure grant funds, uh, going toward Lewesdale Flirdeley Seniors and Pensioners Club, um, look for a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we approve this grant.
It's been moved by Deputy Warden Marshaw that the grant be approved, two thousand dollars to the Flirdeley Seniors and Pensioners Club, can I have a seconder?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Martel. Uh, discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Warden.
Deputy Warden, or sorry, Counsel Goyesh?
Is this part of the shift program?
Uh, I, I believe-
That grant they received, is that the-
I believe there are parts of the grant that align with what, what, much of what the shift program is, talks about, yeah.
Didn't we, as the municipality, apply to the province for funding under the shift program, did we? Uh, CAO, did we do that, or?
No, I think there's talk in the, uh, we didn't.
But we will be, uh, part of our strategic plan is, is connected with the shift program, so, um, we, we haven't been actively involved in the project at any amount, but we've done some small, uh, things on the shift program in recent months, but we'll certainly be ratcheting up that volume as we go forward.
Okay, one other question, uh, maybe the, uh, Chief Financial Officer, I see rentals and purchases forty-three hundred, then you got resources and supplies, three thousand. What actually is the, the difference, how is that purchases and supplies being separate and the resources and rentals, how did it come about with forty-three and three thousand?
That was, um, that's kind of a form they filled out and I guess just under that rentals and purchases, they put the cost of purchases, it's not really rentals.
But what their supplies come under, there would be purchases, wouldn't it?
Basically the same.
The same thing?
Yeah, it's not rentals, yeah.
But the, uh, in the quotes at the-
The explanation, yeah.
Is basically the cost of materials, so, uh, you add up the quotes at the end.
Well, they got total, that's what.
Yeah, well, there's about nine thousand in quotes at the end that, uh, covers the cost of the wood and the bags and the items that they need, but to me-
And label.
It's all purchases.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Question's been called. Um, all those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Motion carried. Thank you, Jason. Uh, item six on the agenda was the review of checks, uh, that would have been in your package, uh, the checks issued for January two thousand nineteen, so if there are any, um, any questions on any of those, you could, you could contact, um, contact myself or the CAO. Um, the item added to the agenda, number seven on the agenda is actually something that we discussed as part of the grants, um, I'm guessing we don't have a fifteen-minute question period this evening?
No.
Motion to adjourn? Uh, we are going in camera, we do have an in-camera- Oh, motion to move in camera, then? Yeah, um, but we will not have a motion coming out of the in-camera session, so, um, it's been moved to go in camera.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Bushet.